Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to Albany City Council Meeting, the first meeting of January 2025. It's January 8th at 6:00 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order and I'd appreciate if you all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. City Clerk Eric, can we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Newton Azor.
Present.
Counselor Thompson.
Here.
Counselor Montague.
Here.
Counselor McLeod.
Present.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor McGee.
Present.
Mayor Johnson.
Here. Thank you very much, Eric. At this time, I would like to ask the City Clerk, Eric Glover, to administer the oath of office for the new elected officials.
I will have you stand right here. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Michael Thompson.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the State of Oregon.
Do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution and the laws of the State of Oregon and the United States.
And support the Charter and ordinances of the City of Albany.
And support the Charter and ordinances of the City of Albany.
And that I will commit to faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Counselor of Ward One.
And I will commit to faithfully perform the duties of Counselor of Ward One.
Of the City of Albany during my continuance therein.
Of the City of Albany during my continuance therein. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. All right, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Carolyn McLeod.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the laws of the Constitution of the United States.
And the State of Oregon.
And the State of Oregon.
And support the Charter and ordinances of the City of Albany.
And support the Charter and ordinances of the City of Albany.
And that I will commit to faithfully perform the duties.
And that I will commit to faithfully perform the duties.
Of the Office of Counselor for Ward Two.
The Office of Counselor of Ward Two.
Of the City of Albany during my continuance therein.
Of the City of Albany during my continuance therein.
Congratulations. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Marilyn Smith.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of the State of Oregon.
And of the State of Oregon.
And support the Charter and ordinances of the City of Albany.
And support the Charter and ordinances of the City of Albany.
And I will commit to faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Counselor for Ward Three.
And I will commit to faithfully perform the duties of Counselor for Ward Three.
Of the City of Albany during my continuance therein.
Of the City of Albany during my continuance therein.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Alexander D. Johnson II.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
I do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And the State of Oregon.
And the State of Oregon.
And support the Charter and ordinances of the City of Albany.
And support the Charter and ordinances of the City of Albany.
And then I will commit to faithfully perform the duties.
I will faithfully commit to perform the duties.
Of the Office of Mayor of the City of Albany.
Of the Office of Mayor of the City of Albany.
During my continuance therein.
During my continuance therein.
Congratulations.
Next on the agenda is election of the council president. The council president is someone that will serve as my replacement or interim while I'm on business, sick, in the hospital, car crash, out of the city performing business with, on behalf of the City of Albany. And that person must commit or be available to meet with the city manager on our regular meetings and come in from time to time and serve as mayor as needed if I'm out of town. So at this time, I would like to open the floor for nominations for City Council President.
Mr. Mayor, I move to elect Counselor Newton Azor as council president.
Second.
Any comments?
Does Counselor Newton Azor accept this?
Will she accept?
Will you accept? Excuse me.
Sure.
Is that something that you will be able to attend meetings and what did you say? And.
Serve as mayor if I'm incapacitated or no?
I just want to make sure.
Yes.
Okay.
So do I ask for any other nominations or do I vote now? The attorney?
If there's other nominations, someone can make that motion, but if there's not, then we can.
I nominate Marilyn Smith.
I have a motion and a second.
Wait. She made a nomination. Okay.
Second? What was that? Second? Can I second it?
You can say. I would want to defer to Eric on this and maybe not new, but my understanding is under Robert's Rules of Order for this particular situation only. You don't need a second on a nomination of this, but.
Is that correct?
He may not. I'm putting him on the spot.
That would be correct.
Yeah.
We don't need a second?
That is correct.
So all those in favor of Steph Newton Azor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
I have a motion and can you do a roll call?
Newton Azor?
Yeah.
Counselor Thompson?
Aye.
Counselor Montague?
Aye.
Counselor McLeod?
Aye.
Counselor Smith? Counselor McGee? Mayor Johnson?
No.
Or three?
Okay. So, Mike, so do I have veto on that?
I don't. I don't think so.
Okay.
So, yeah, Mayor, I believe you only have veto power on ordinances that come before the council and this wouldn't be an ordinance, so on this particular.
Council has selected a council president. Congratulations, Steph Newton Azor.
Thank you.
Next on tonight's agenda is the mayor's address. Gotta find it. City of, citizens of Albany, on January 1st, 2025, we celebrated entering the final year of the first quarter century of the 21st century. Our mission statement is clear and concise, providing quality public services for a better Albany community. The City Council is committed to ensuring we accomplish our mission. We're guided by the themes highlighted in our strategic plan to ensure we accomplish goals, the goals created to support each thing. We have a lot of important work to do in the coming months to build in the process, on the work of past councils. As we look back to 2023 and 2024, our community has grown and our economy continues to improve as businesses realize the value of being centrally located in the Alamo Valley. It is clear that we must pursue various types of housing options to increase the housing inventory available of all current and future residents of Albany. The implications of failing to address our housing issues will have long-term negative effects on the growth and livability of Albany. We must create opportunities for the unhoused residents to have access to resources, services, and shelter required to begin the healing necessary to improve their quality of life. We must engage and partner with business and community leaders and governmental organizations to ensure the diverse community is an accepting, inclusive, and healthy place for everyone in Albany. Our housing implementation plan is essential, an essential tool to use to shape, for us to use to shape the future climate-friendly communities and livable neighborhoods in our city. We continue to improve our economy by seeking out economic development opportunities best suited for Albany. It is imperative that Albany have a healthy business community comprised of businesses from multiple industries, sectors, and sizes to drive the creation of livable wage, living wage employment opportunities for our citizens. The 2026-2027 budget process is underway. From now until the end of June, our city manager must prepare and deliver to the City Council a balanced budget for the coming biennium. The city has limited resources and is important for that we exercise good stewardship of those resources to successfully operate and deliver the services necessary to have a healthy and safe city. I believe change is inevitable. Change can be beneficial when it brings infusion of new ideas and fresh perspectives from previous unheard voices. However, change can be difficult. You can help shape the change of our city, and I encourage you to contact your city councilor and find out how you can participate in your local government. Your voice will help council representatives make the best possible decision on behalf of all the constituents they or he or she represents. Each member of the City Council is committed to ensuring Albany continues to be a safe and welcoming community for all recurrent and future residents of Albany. I am extremely humbled to be reelected to serve as the mayor of Albany. I am honored to serve as mayor, and I wholeheartedly commit to being approachable, interactive, responsive, and transparent public servant for the betterment of Albany. With respect, Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor of the City of Albany, Oregon. Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is business from the public. Business from the public is a time for the Albany residents to speak to the councillors and the councillors to listen. The council will not discuss topics to make decisions during the business from the public, but will take comments or requests under advisement. Speakers are limited to three minutes and must follow the council rules and observe the same standards of decorum. If you are unable to do so, they will be asked to step down and take the seat in the audience for the rest of the meeting. When you get to the microphone, please give your name and whether or not you live in the City of Albany. I have a call on Mr. Mike Quinn, the first in business from the public.
Mike Quinn, Albany resident. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to come ahead of everything. I have another scheduled appointment. Couple of quick things here. I just heard the word Robert's Rules of Order. I'm hoping that maybe the complete council and mayor can follow this potentially in the future on public hearings. Three minutes aren't enough for a lot of time to yield, and I'm hoping that we can do longer times in the future by yielding, like everybody else in every, from county to state to federal, they yield times to their people that want to speak longer. Second thing is, at the last hearing that we had, we have countless people that came up to a group of us talking about cellphone usage and that and playing with your phone during the meeting and stuff, not really paying attention to what was being said. And then at the end in that chastising the people that came here with a substantial amount of history. The people that spoke at that hearing has hundreds of years of experience in that, in the housing situation and everything else. The third thing is, basically, we have a new councilman. I'm speaking for my area and that, in North Albany. And I know that he, Mr. Thompson, this is actually geared towards you. You talked to many people. You went door-to-door. I applaud you on how you got elected and stuff because you reached out to people, but the number one thing people talked to you about was North Albany's congestion and their storm water situation there. And I know that most of you up here are kind of no growers, in a sense. You're not going to stop it. But if you want to pick a battle instead of trying to rage a war, why don't you go against North Albany? And I am a resident out there, folks, North Albany, and start questioning your planning people and everything else because of the congestion and the storm water issue. I think we're going to get to a point with storm water that we're really going to be in cahoots with the state if we don't watch out. So I appreciate the mayor for being approachable because you really are an approachable guy. And you listen and stuff, and I hope the rest of you can follow this example in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And I gotta go. Thanks.
Next to speak to the council is newly elected or sworn-in commissioner from Benton County, Gabe Shepherd. A former employee also, so welcome.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. I don't know if I've ever sat in this, in this seat before. Hello, everyone. My name is Gabe Shepherd. I am your newly sworn-in Benton County Commissioner. So I wanted to just introduce myself this evening, although I know all of you from sitting in that chair over there for a long time. I have been appointed the Benton County Commission's liaison to the City of Albany. So I will be working with you all on solving issues in North Albany, our shared residence up there. Talk about roads, talk about wastewater, talk about congestion. So I look forward to working with you, especially Counselors Thompson and Newton Azor, whose ward covers North Albany and the mayor. And the rest of you are all welcome as well to come down to my office in Corvallis and have some tea and talk about issues that we share here in Albany. So I just want to introduce myself tonight in my new official capacity. I have delivered each of you my, my new business card, which has my, my business phone and my business email on it. So please stay in contact and I look forward to working with you for the betterment of our communities.
Thank you.
Congrats again, Gabe.
Next on the business from the public is Jamie Smith.
Good evening to everyone. Thank you. I'm here in response to this notification I had received in the mail for the hip plan. This presentation also was given to the planning commission in its entirety. I'm going to ask that the submission that I have here, that you please read it in its entirety as I'm giving you a shorter version tonight. Two items to cover this evening. Waste system at maximum capacity for the pump station. I live in Albany. I'm on at 111237th Avenue Southwest. The pump station Oak Creek is at maximum capacity. Building cannot occur on the 37th Avenue Southwest or 39th Avenue Southwest due to this fact, even though there is a flat land and it appears to be buildable. This might be true in other areas of the city. Managing growth is what I want to really focus on this evening. Police, fire, and public works need to grow with population. We need to manage our growth. We need to have managed growth. Maintenance and managing are hard things. With city growth and population increasing, we need to maintain and manage all things, not just the newness of the new dwellings. When this type of decision is made, it is imperative that we are prepared for the various things that population and housing increase results in. I refer to this document, East Albany Plan Development Alternative. It was submitted August 24th, '22. Our city is congested to the north and to the east. Traffic's become congested. We all know that we get this with growth. Please build the roads first and they will come. Everyone comes into town to do most all their business. We've created this. Albany has good schools, lower housing prices, transit roads, which helps city access and industry. But we need to increase our infrastructure to support growth. This includes improving the streets, growing necessary supporting businesses outwardly, growing public works, and growing the fire department and growing the police department in proportion to the growth. As was stated in the last council meeting on December 11th, 2024, property that is a city property in the North Albany roundabout area, this property possibly will be used for maintenance yard. Public works needs to grow out as housing and population grow out. Please refer to the ICMA document that is submitted within my submittal. It's titled, "Survey Shows A Decrease in Average Number of Police and Fire Per Capita." I hypothesize that this has occurred as a result of population growth and no increase to the fire and the police essential services. Growth occurs with no plan for essential services. Our population in the City of Albany is approximately 60,000. We have a daily transient population of that which is double due to the I-5 freeway and the Highway 34. Albany Fire Department serves this transient community daily, 24/7. Fire stations, police substations need to grow out ahead of the growth to accomplish the necessary response times for the community and for insurance ratings. As was stated in the last council meeting on December 11th, we do not have to implement the housing implementation plan. It is recommended by the state. Please let us pause and consider these things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Robert Gallatin. Is that correct?
Gallatin.
Gallatin, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The reason I come before you is our streets. Everybody knows that's in this building right now that our streets, there's a lot of them that are in disrepair. And it was brought to my attention that we are moving forward with some electrical vehicle charging stations. I understand we're getting a grant from the federal government, but to get that grant, we have to have some matching funds to go along with that. My problem is I don't see where we should take it from our streets fund to match that when there's a possibility for private industry to, to come up with those matching funds. So I, I'm asking the City Council to, to keep that in mind as they go to vote on this and move it forward to make sure that, that our streets are being taken care of first, the ones that we have that are especially in so, so much disrepair. You know, I can point out on one of the YouTube videos that I watched where the street maintenance funding, one that the city put out, it's stated that we had a $12-point million funding gap for our, the repair of our streets. I understand that the amount that would be needed for this infrastructure to be done is $460,000. Doesn't sound like that's going to do a, or cause a big dent in that $12.8 million, but it is something. The way you eat an elephant is one bite at a time. So $460,000 towards that would start, start the process. Again, I would like for you guys to keep that in mind when you go and vote for this. If you can not use our street fund monies and have, you know, private sector donations, whatever that happens to be, fill that void to put it in. I'm not against having these charging stations, just not using our street funds. Thank you.
Next is Lee Gallatin. Brothers?
Brothers. And I'm here about the same thing. I, I heard you speak earlier saying that it's your job as a city council to do what's best for the City of Albany. And I think appropriating money for charging stations away from fixing streets is not a good idea. And I'm pretty sure that if you, if more people knew about this, they'd be here to talk about it. I only know because he's all into it. But I think that we should not take the money from our streets. I mean, I don't know about you, but I don't want to have to dodge potholes on my way to the grocery store. And that's just, I'm, that should be the easiest thing for you guys to know. It'd be easier to fix the potholes, charging stations for electric cars. Okay, fine, we have, I think there's five different places in the City of Albany already. We don't need any more right now. Or if they want them, like he said, private sector can fund it. We should not be funding this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jamel Meskada. Meskado?
Sorry. This is, hello, City Council, Mr. Mayor. So the reason why I'm here, I'm actually, it's the first City Council meeting in my life. But the reason why I'm here is I read in the Gazette at the time, the last meeting, there was a proposal for potential tax on residential housing developers to create a fund for affordable housing. Now, one of the things I read on there was there was no one that was representing someone who was living, who grew up in affordable housing or currently needed affordable housing. Well, I grew up in East Harlem, New York, 1981, been 23 years in the military. And I grew up with my grandmother on welfare and project housing. So reading that, I was like, well, I am, I am the person currently that grew up, I had to grow up in a place where it was a fixed rent where it, my grandmother and my grandfather, my grandfather was a taxi cab driver, could afford it. Now, I can tell you, I lived in Albany for the last three years. My wife and I own a home and our taxes have gone up every year. Well, our mortgage is going up every year based on, I imagine, taxes and insurance. We have three children and the day I bought a house, we got married back in 2014, give you a little history, and we bought a home. Now, that was the happiest day of my life up until that point, besides getting married and then having my children. One of my fears now is that my children, my 20-year-old son and a seven and three-year-old, is that the cost of buying a home will be out of reach. And so with that, I, I don't want to propose just the, this is bad. Please don't, don't tax residential housing. There's, I know there's grants. I work for the federal government. I'm a recruiter with the Oregon Army National Guard, retiring a year. I know the federal government has money. They definitely have money for affordable housing. I don't know if anyone has, has put their effort into finding out how can we unlock those funds? How much? funds, how much, what has to be done. I would propose, I'd work for free just to keep a tax off of residential housing off the table. And the reason why is because growing up in New York City is the most, one of the most expensive places to live. I could, I have a comfortable living, my wife has a very good career. I could not live in New York City at all, ever, because of the cost. So I know what a tax or a potential fix that seems like a good idea could do long-term, and I know that as a community, this community wants affordable housing. I just, I just think that the effort may not be there yet to get all hands on deck. So that's, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Next is Jason Cadwell. Is he here? There he is.
I'm just probably going to reiterate what a couple other folks talked about regarding the EV chargers and that, again, if there's potential to utilize city funds as that match, I understand the idea of it, but when I'm looking at the council packet tonight and all of the, what the 2025 department presentations, every challenge, every one of these departments has a challenge of funds and shortfalls, and we can't afford to be putting money towards something where, you know, I think on average, you know, there's about 3.8 million worth of EV vehicles on the road right now compared to, you know, upwards of 300 million in the gas world. Again, the EV versus the gas doesn't matter, but the point is we're spending money towards something that is a very small percentage and where our other departments really need that money. So I just challenge that if you're going to march forward with that, that you put in a caveat that if there's a contractor that's willing to fork, fork out the money to do it, go that route versus spending our own money. I would highly, highly encourage that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Next, Executive Director Lisa Grado, Downtown Association.
Lisa Grado, Executive Director of the Albany Downtown Association. Welcome back, councilors, and welcome to the new councilors. Look forward to working with all of you, and congratulations, Mayor. I just wanted to give you, like I said, a quick downtown update. One of the big things that's going on right now is that we are applying for our third round of Oregon Main Street Revitalization Grants. We've been successful twice in the past, received a full $200,000 grant for the Oregon Electric Railway Station. That was in 2022, and then in 2023, we did the unthinkable and applied for two, and we're not slapped, but we're awarded both. One has been completed and the other one is still in progress, so we're quite excited about those projects as well. There's a training tomorrow morning, and there's information in our newsletter, which is available on our website, and I have hard copies with me. Another thing I'd like to share is Gallery Kalapuya's Big Show of Little Art is coming up. This is the one where the community can paint or create an eight-by-eight or a three-dimensional eight-by-eight-by-eight piece of artwork. They must be available for sale, although I saw one youngster ask $1,000 because I think they didn't want their piece to sell, or they had a relative that was going to help them with their college fund. Anyway, they are seeking entries. They can be hand-delivered to the gallery on Sunday, January 21, between 10:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. They limit to about 110 pieces, depending upon the size and how they fit. And then there will be an artist's reception on February 7, and the exhibit runs the 26th through, of January through February 22. Also like to share that here at the City Hall, there's an exhibit that's currently showing, and the artist's reception for that will be on Friday, February 7, from 5:00 to 7:00. And you can preview the art now, but maybe come back from refreshments at that time. Our Meet the Neighbors feature is on Asian Fair and Lunar New Year. Delighted to say that we have three Asian restaurants downtown, all owner, locally owned, and between the three of them, yes, you can dine seven days a week. Some are open five days or six days, but between them, there's always one open. Our volunteer spotlight is on Glenn Anderson. You may not recognize his face, but you probably see his Scooby van, whether it's been in our parade or the support he provides with audio throughout the downtown. Want to let people know that tomorrow, the ferry parking lot will be closed. That's the parking lot behind the J.C. Penney Building. There's going to be an inspection done, so there won't be parking back there tomorrow. We've accommodated the lease space holders at other locations. And I'm done.
Thank you, Director. Are you going to give us a copy of those?
I will have to ask.
Okay, thank you. Next, Business from the Public is John Robinson.
Good evening, John Robinson. I'm an Albany resident. I want to talk about the three-minute rule tonight. So I want to see a change in the three-minute rule on input from the public, whether at a public hearing or business from the public. My recommendation would be to change it to six minutes for presenters who submit written comments ahead of time, and leave it at three minutes for presenters who want to just speak off the cuff. I usually come prepared with facts and figures to present after spending several hours in preparation. So I don't ramble, I don't get off the topic, and I realize and respect how important your time is. Likewise, my time is also valuable. I find it very difficult to present an alternate viewpoint to the city in only three minutes. Yes, you are elected public officials, representatives of the public, but that does not mean that you possess all the knowledge on every given subject or that your constituents agree with you 100% of the time. That's the reason this public process is so important, to hear different perspectives. Now, I've been critical of the process, feeling that the council often rubber stamps staff's proposals. I'm left to believe that the only purpose of limiting input to three minutes is because the decision has already been made. But law mandates a public hearing, so it just becomes a formality to pass whatever has already been decided. This in turn creates apathy, and I believe it's the reason many people have given up in coming to council meetings, to voice their concerns. Now, if I have it all wrong and this is incorrect, then why not allow six minutes for a more robust discussion? I'm only speaking for myself. I'll continue to engage in respectful dialogue. I'd like to see more open minds, and I would hope that we could change the time limit to six minutes. And I thank you for your thoughtful consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
And look, only took two minutes.
Well done. Next on tonight's agenda is adoption of the consent agenda. Council?
Move to adopt the consent calendar as presented.
Second. Have a motion at a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Say no. Thank you. Next, item nine on the agenda is staff reports. Personal changes in the finance department. Deputy Director Caleb Barber Perata.
Number eight.
Mayor, you got number eight.
Oh, number eight. Oh, excuse me. Accepted a grant and appropriation of funds. United States Department of Transportation Charging and Fuel Infrastructure Grant, CFI, Stacy Bel Castro and Carl Berg, pages 47 to 50 in your packet. Sorry about that. Oh, where's Stacy?
She's in a much better place. She's in Hawaii.
I don't know how to read that.
She's in Hawaii. She's literally in a much better place.
She's in, yeah.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Carl Berg, Public Works Engineering. In September 2024, the city was notified that we had been selected to receive a charging and fueling infrastructure grant from the U.S. Department of Transportation to construct electric vehicle charging stations in four locations around the city. Staff received direction from council to proceed with applying for the grant back in May of 2023. The grant is to construct publicly available Level 2 and Level 3 or DC fast chargers. The four locations are North Albany Park and Ride, Two Rivers Mall Parking Lot Downtown, Albany Multi-Modal Station, which is the train station, and a commercial property partnership yet to be established near the North I-5 interchange Knox-Pete Road. The grant award amount is $1,848,960. The grant requires a 20% match. The grant we received is a community grant, which allows us the option of contracting with a private entity such as a charging company. We would pursue this option through a competitive procurement process. Further, we will seek for the contracted entity to cover the 20% match, as per the CFI grant program. But the city, as the grant recipient, is ultimately responsible for ensuring the 20% matching amount is met. Staff is asking for council to adopt a resolution by motion, accepting the CFI grant from the U.S. Department of Transportation for construction of these electric vehicle charging stations.
Counsel, any questions? Counselor Thompson?
The $460,000 is sitting there, and you just said you will seek, as part of the agreement, you will seek the end user to cover that ideally. The only thing is, and the people from public comment kind of stole my thunder, I felt the same way. I don't think, I don't think we should be expending any money. I mean, I understand $460,000 in the grand scheme of things is a drop in the bucket to the transportation needs of the city, but I don't want to spend any money out of the Transportation Repair Fund, really for any reason other than transportation and road repair. And the problem I have, I don't want to, I also don't want to like get in the way of your activities. It's just, it's so vague. It could happen. It sounds like you're going to try everything in your power to find another way to have someone else cover that 20%, but ultimately, ultimately, we are on the hook for it. And I myself, I can't, I just don't want to go down that road.
Any other counsel? Counselor Montague.
So, or a question, I guess. So what I heard you say was you were going to, as part of the bidding process, request that the company covers that match, correct? During that process, we have a choice of who we accept, right? So if there was a company that didn't say they were going to match that, we have the power to not accept that bid. Is that correct?
Yeah, so if we get multiple bids, then that would be one of the review criteria is, is the, and it would be the charging infrastructure provider. So there are multiple, but you can think of your favorite charging company. And if there, that could be a criteria that if the council wants to, us to apply that, that's what we would do, is we would look at that and use that in ranking the proposals.
And then my other question is, is that pretty standard to have the infrastructure company bidding, cover the match, requesting?
I think it's very common. So we went through a series of workshops on this grant program, and I think it's common across the country that they're, the charging companies will contribute or provide all of the match, and because they also have a stake, obviously, in the rate that is charged. And Carl can probably, he and I, I'm sure both daily, we get emails from charging companies that want to partner with us on this project. So I can't, I mean, I would, Counselor Thompson is correct, and this is the council's decision. Ultimately, the city has to commit the match. Private entities cannot apply for these grants, has to be a public entity, and the city has to pledge the match. So if we get someone to cover it, wonderful. If not, the city covers it, or the grant goes back.
Thank you. So any other questions, counsel? So the question I have is, so the people that put in and install the units, they'll be the ones collecting the fees for the?
So there'll be an agreement, and we have a lot of work to do to understand exactly how this works, but in my, you know, very quick research, the municipality sets the rate for the city-owned chargers. So you would ideally want to recover your actual costs, so the cost of the power that's consumed, and you would want to recover some additional for maintenance because part of this grant agreement is that the city has to commit to a certain percentage of uptime. That's the big complaint about, yes, there are other charging stations in town. What I have heard is that they're almost always all broken. So part of getting people to rely on these vehicles is having reliable charging stations. So the city has to commit to maintaining a certain percentage of uptime. So we want to also recover probably some costs that would go towards the operation and maintenance of these facilities. And then the provider is going, they are for-profit companies, so they probably will have an additional, part of the charge will be part of what they could use to sustain their business. That's what they do. And then that agreement would end after a certain period of time. So let's say it's a 10-year agreement or a five-year agreement or something. We have a lot of work to do to research how these things are typically done, but that is my understanding of essentially how the rate is calculated, and then the city and the, and the provider agree on the rate.
So could we, if we were to pay this $460, whatever it is, can we put that as part of the clawback from the rate or as part of the rate?
Well, that could be part of, I'm guessing, I'm a little bit out over my skis, but I'm guessing that that could be part is a recovery or building up an additional reserve for either paying back the street fund for that $460 or for building future, more of these types of stations. But I, there probably, there might be some statutes around that, so we need to do some work on that to make sure that we're not doing something we can't do. But my understanding is that you can structure your rate so that you recover your full costs, and then, of course, if you have a for-profit provider, there's probably a little bit of their cost in there as well.
So what is the schedule for this grant?
For receiving the grant or for the construction and installation?
Receiving the, so what do we have to do to receive the grant? When, what is the timeline?
So we have to, if we're authorized by the council to proceed, then we would make the agreement with the U.S. Department of Transportation, and that could probably happen pretty quickly. So we've, we're, yeah.
And then this grant is reimbursement basis, so, which all federal grants are reimbursement basis. So essentially, it would, the contract would go out for bid, as Carl mentioned, or the proposal would go out for RFPs, RFQs, whichever of the processes. And then there's a period of time for the response, the collection and rating of response, and then the construction would have to happen. So the actual money would come in as the construction or the work on the project is done. We can, I think, recover some of our staff costs as the project goes on, and I believe, although I might be getting it confused, that we can also use some of the grant funds for outreach.
That's correct. Yep.
So as we do work on the project, we request 80%. If Carl spends $100 worth of his time, we request $80 from the federal government, and they pay us back, and the other $20 is charged to the street fund. So that's how that goes.
Counsel, have you heard anything? You heard enough? Any more questions?
Oh, a comment.
Counselor Smith?
I'm in favor of adopting the resolution as printed with the addition of including, making sure that the, when the bids are, go out or are received, that that $460,000 is part of the price.
Yeah, so I think we can adopt, Sean can correct me, adopt the resolution, and then your direction to staff is include the private entity covering the match as part of the proposal criteria. And that would just go out with the proposal.
And that would keep us, that would keep the street fund whole, ultimately.
It would. If we, if we only receive proposals and that do not provide... If we, if we only receive proposals and that do not provide that cover of that match...
We can reject them.
We would reject them, and then we would have to turn the grant back to the federal government. And that's always possible. It's not desirable to do that. But that's okay. We can do it. We've turned grants back before.
I have a comment.
Go ahead, please.
So I had actually a constituent reach out about, reach out about the EV charging station over on First and, like, Berry.
Behind the J.C. Penney Building.
Yeah. And so I know that there is an issue with that EV charging station. Usually, it doesn't work. I know when I spoke to Sophie, that it was kind of working every once in a while, like just a surprise. And you did mention as well, there would be kind of a maintenance aspect of this. How can we ensure, like, the investment or like having these in place, that we aren't going to have them constantly breaking? I know we need to have a percentage of uptime.
Yeah, so one of the requirements for the National Electric Vehicle Standards with this grant is a ninety-seven percent uptime. And so anybody who's getting this grant is going to be subject to that requirement, and that would include us. And so these charging companies would also be familiar with that requirement. So if we said that it had to meet the National Electric Vehicle Standards, which we have to say that it has to meet that for this grant, then that, one of those standards is it requires a ninety-seven percent uptime for each charging port on an annual basis.
And my understanding is that the way that that requirement is enforced is through this agreement with the company?
Do we have that?
And if they don't meet it, then they have financial penalties that they would have to pay to us. The charging station that was put in downtown was not done through this program. It was, I think that this program was designed to have requirements that address things like that, that station was not installed with the robust requirements that we would have through this grant program. I think Sophie would agree with that.
That's neat. It's good news to hear.
Counsel, we have a resolution before us. Do I have a motion?
I move adoption of the resolution on page forty-nine.
Second.
Yeah, with your caveat, though, right?
With, yes, with the caveat.
Did you get her caveat? She wanted to add to that? Okay, thank you.
I think it's this direction.
Yeah, direction. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Next, on number nine, again, on the staff report, personnel changes in the finance department with Kayla Barbara, Kayla Barbara Parada and Gina Jaeger on pages fifty-one and fifty-two of your packet.
Good evening, counsel. We're going to keep this pretty short and sweet, because I know we have a lot of staff presentations following for you. But tonight, we have a report in your packet discussing some finance personnel changes. So what we're looking to do is to reclass the grants coordinator position into a budget manager position. So a few years ago, these were, a few years ago, we collapsed two positions, which covered accounting and payroll functions, and then also budget functions, into a singular finance manager. Since then, that position has turned over several times, with exit interviews indicating that it is a workload and burnout issue in that area. What that has resulted in, as many of you have seen, is a delay and disruption in the ability to complete our financial reporting. In order to address this, we are seeking to split that position back out, reworking the finance manager position into an accounting manager, and then utilizing this unfilled grants coordinator position to cover the budget portion. In your packet, there is a typo I do want to correct on here. The impact for the budget is a eight thousand five hundred and seven dollar impact, not an eighteen thousand five hundred and seven dollar impact for the remainder of the biennium. So with that, I'm happy to turn it over if there's any questions.
Counsel, any questions? Any comments? Thank you for the correction. Counsel, do we have a motion?
I move that we accept the reclassification as presented.
I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, on tonight's agenda, the department presentations, department strategy discussions continue on page fifty-three through ninety-one. First up would be the finance, I believe.
Mayor, tonight, as you point out, we're carrying on the series of presentations that we started Monday evening. It was a natural break on Monday.
Oh, you're right. I agree. So be back...
Okay.
Ready?
Actually, I was using the term "natural break" in the sense that we finished with our front-facing, public-facing departments, and now we're going to move into the logistics part of it, the people, money, and information. But you're thinking of natural break as a break time.
So let's take a biological break from, be back at two after, ten minutes. Thank you.
So we're back in session at 7:52 PM. I would like the city managers to ask for some time. So before your presentation, Director, City Manager Peter Schrotzen.
Now, just to reintroduce and remind you where we left off on Monday night. As I mentioned, it was a natural break in the other sense of the word. We completed presentations from our public-facing departments. Each of those departments has to have people with whom to deal, to do their job. They have to have financial resources. They have to have the funding necessary to accomplish their missions, and they have to have information. Together, people, finances, and information provide the means by which those services are delivered. Providing the right resources at the right time is the challenge. And tonight, we'll hear from directors of those departments about those challenges. And once again, questions are important. Your questions are very important, and I encourage you to ask them either tonight or in a follow-up email or phone call. And now let me turn it over to Gina Jaeger, our Finance Director. She'll be followed by Sean Park, our CIO. And then you'll hear from Holly Rotten, whose initials are HR. And Kayla will close us out with a presentation on the City Manager's Office. So over to you, Gina.
Thank you. So the Finance Department has 16.6 FTEs and a $6.3 million budget. However, we are composed of two different divisions, basically. So we have Finance, and we also have Municipal Court. Here in Albany, Municipal Court falls under the Finance Department. The key words in our mission are transparent, ethical, strategic, effective, and efficient. And we try to be all those things for the city. We are the Finance Department for the city. We make sure our people get paid. We make sure our vendors get paid. We make sure that the money coming into the city and the money going out to the city are accounted for properly. We make sure that... We work with departments to make sure that they're procuring properly. There are a lot of rules around procurement, especially when you're talking federal funds. And so we have very highly skilled people who can help the departments with those procurements. So Finance, we do payroll, accounts payable, cash reconciliation, contracts, budgeting, and reporting. And then Municipal Court does traffic violations, misdemeanor city ordinance violations, and they have a mental health court that's been very successful. Judge Meyer will be presenting soon on the state of the court. So on our org chart, we have both Finance and we have the Court. We do not have the judge listed, although she is technically a city employee. She doesn't report to us. She reports directly to you. You are the ones who hired her. There's just a rule that she has to be a city employee. It's her court. She and September work very closely... September, for those of you who don't know, is our court supervisor, September Ridgeway. And she and Judge Meyer work very closely together to make sure that the court is run in a very efficient manner and that we see everybody that we need to see. There are a lot of people who come through these doors. And there's going to be even more with the photo enforcement cameras, once we get those going. Some of our accomplishments is process improvement. We have, with the help of City Manager's Office, greatly reduced the number of orgs and objects in our chart of accounts. I think we currently have about 8,000, and we have reduced those greatly. So it's going to make things more efficient for departments. They're not going to have to scratch their head about whether or not something is a material in supply or something is something else. We'll be able to make that much clearer and much cleaner. We've also implemented an internal help desk, very similar to the one that we have, the IT has. And it's going to give us good metrics, so we can see the types of questions that we get. We can see if we get a lot of questions over a certain area. Maybe we can provide some better resources for that and better training for that for the city. So we're really trying to use this to become more efficient and more effective as we do our work and help other departments become more effective, too. We're also using technology in new ways. We've implemented monday.com, and it's a program that several departments in the city have been using just to help us plan how we're doing our work. And, for example, we have our audit information out there so that we can check off the things that need to be done. And we're also looking at other reporting software. We have Depbook, which is a software that's helped us do some of our GASB pronouncements, which is the Government Accounting Standards Board. Trying not to use too many acronyms, but we have a lot of them in Finance. We also are contracting with a company to do our budget digitally, if that's a word, and also our ACFER, which is the annual comprehensive... It used to be CAFER, Finance... Why can't I remember it? Report, thank you. So those will be digital. Those will help increase transparency. We will also be able to do them much easier, much more efficiently. It's going to take hours of staff, off-staff, to do those. The old process was very manual. We used Excel. And we used a lot of creating documents and then having to put it in PDF, going in, creating the next document, PDF-ing that, and it was very time-consuming. So some of the trends that we're still seeing is Measures 5 and 50 limit property tax revenues. We've been talking about this for years. It limits it to a 3% increase in assessed property taxes. Just costs in general are rising. Inflation has hit us hard. We see huge increases in numbers for chemicals, for other services. It just is the way that, you know, it's been going. Inflation has just been, has been hard for us. Technology, we're using more and more technology, like AI. You know, we're still learning how to use that effectively and without divulging too much information and seeing how effectively we can, how we can use that. Open data and transparency are also big trends. And we do have a city transparency website out on our website. We're hoping that with the new budget, digital budget book, that we can put even more information out there for our constituents. There's difficulty in hiring qualified employees. Right now, we are sitting with two vacancies in Finance. It's hard to find people, especially those who have some experience with municipal accounting. Government accounting is a specialized field. And it's, we seem to steal from each other. So, you know, we may find somebody who works for Lebanon, and then that person goes and works for another city. And so it's really hard to get somebody who knows what they're doing and who can hit the ground running. And then we also have a shortage of municipal auditors. Here in Oregon, every municipality, almost every municipality, is required to be audited on an annual basis. And just like we're seeing fewer accountants, they're also seeing fewer accountants. It just makes it even more difficult. So looking ahead, challenges. We've had, you know, loss of key employees. It's part of the reason why we are behind. We're currently working with a consultant to get everything caught up. Revenues haven't kept up with expenditures. You know, we're limited property tax-wise, 3% assessed value. We're hoping it comes in a little higher than that with some of the new development, but it won't be much more than that. Ongoing issues with financial software. We've been using the same ERP system since 2019, and it's still giving us, you know, hiccups here and there. State and federal mandates, like everybody else in the city. We have a lot of regulations. We have a lot of, we have a lot of things that we have to do. For example, there was a recent change with retainage on construction projects. It used to be that if you had a construction project that was over $500,000, we had to put those funds into an interest-bearing account. That has now changed to all construction. So we are going to have to manually track that. And there's a lot. We do a lot. We have a lot of construction that is going on in the city. And then reporting, again, federal reporting is, there's a lot of it. You can, you know, if you talk to people like Anne Catlin with her CTBG, Community Development Block Grants, the federal government wants a lot of information on that. I have to report out on ARPA funds. I had to, I have to report out on the opioid settlement funds. So we have a lot of reporting that we have to do, and it takes time to do those things. But along with some of those challenges, we have some opportunities. You know, losing key employees. We have the opportunity to get new employees who maybe bring their own experience, bring their own skills, their own, you know, things they've worked on that they can, they can help us, what they can bring to us. We also are taking advantage of leveraging technology for efficiency and helping reduce the amount of work on individuals so that we don't have to keep hiring more and more people. We can take some of that load off, so maybe people aren't going to be burned out as quickly as they may already have been. We're also looking at bidding and procurement software to make everything very easy, one place. It will help with our contracting and also help with education for some of our contractors in the city. And then also looking at new revenue sources. I think that's all I have on here. I am more than happy to take any questions that anybody has.
Counsel, any questions or comments for the Director?
Question. Status of the audit?
The auditors currently have our fiscal year '23 trial balance. We just met with our consultants. We plan to have numbers by March. That's the plan. And the auditors will be working along with the consultants, who I will also note is an audit firm. So they'll be working in conjunction with each other to make sure that our audit gets done as quickly as possible.
And are we still talking about '23 or '24?
'23 is the one that the auditors have started working on. And then as soon as that one is completed, then we'll, they'll move right into '24.
Thank you.
Any other councils have questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Information Technology. Would you like to say something, Peter, beforehand?
Two is always better. Good evening. My name is Sean Park. I'm the Chief Information Technology Officer here at the city. I've been with Albany for almost 10 years, and I have moved into the CIO role about four years ago. I want to thank you for your time this evening. We're not a public-facing department. We tend to operate behind the scenes, so I appreciate you giving me a little bit of time this evening to talk a bit about what we do. Our mission in IT is to deliver exceptional customer support and robust technology solutions that drive quality public services. We are the IT department for the City Manager's Office, including the mayor and city council, community development, Finance, and Municipal Court, the Fire Department, HR, Library, Parks, Police, and Public Works. We also work with partner agencies in managing shared systems and services, including Lynn County Sheriff's Office and the District Attorney's Office. We currently have 12 FTE, and the two-year IT budget is $5.1 million, split across three budget programs. We have general IT, which is the largest of the three, followed by our permits program for our building and inspection systems and then our GIS program for our mapping and asset management services. The IT department is structured into two divisions, Infrastructure and Operations, with cybersecurity as a significant element of our work in both of those. The Infrastructure Division provides the foundations for the city's technology systems. And at its core, our data storage systems that currently house three petabytes of data, which is the equivalent of about 1 billion smartphone photos. I kind of like that figure. It's interesting. Data storage is closely linked with our server systems, with most assets housed in the city's two data centers, one here in City Hall and one over at the main public library. We are responsible for storing, backing up, and recovering all city data ranging from city council agendas to body cam video evidence. Infrastructure also includes the city's copper, fiber, and wireless networks. Together with data storage and servers, these comprise our private cloud system here at the city, offering fast, secure, and reliable access to city systems. They also manage the citywide phone system along with alarms and emergency alerting. While the Infrastructure Division provides the foundation, the Operations Division is responsible for making sure our business systems function effectively and securely, such as our automation and reporting systems, budget payroll and timesheets in Finance, and patient charting, records dispatch, and body cam systems in public safety. Operations also manages citywide systems that are used by every department, such as email, document management and archiving, and office productivity and collaboration applications. We also manage systems that enable us to provide online services to the public, such as the library catalog, recreation management, and the building permit systems. The Operations Division provides 24/7 technical support to 450 city users throughout our, through our Help Desk system, which accounts for most of its workload. On an average day, IT is actively working on 200 support tickets with about 30 submitted per day. We provide in-person support as well as phone and remote assistance. In addition to over 500 user systems in the office, we also support on average about 120 remote users and 400 smartphones, along with the security and management systems that help us use those things. Cybersecurity is integrated into every aspect of our operations, ensuring that our systems are available and threat resistant. This includes proactive threat monitoring, regular vulnerability assessments, employee training, and managing security controls across our city. We also provide disaster recovery infrastructure to get us back in business as soon as possible should an attack take us offline. Along with security systems are cybersecurity incident response planning, training, exercises, which all help us recover from a cybersecurity incident should one happen. The IT department has 12 positions, with infrastructure here on the left, with three FTE and the remainder of our department being in operations. With several retirements over the past 18 months, we saw an opportunity to organize the department in a more efficient way that removes friction between the two managers and the employees they supervise without overloading them, while focusing on infrastructure and operations as the core, primary domains of our service. IT had several accomplishments over the past year. We had a core systems uptime of 99.9%, with less than nine hours of downtime in 2024. The downtime was either due to planned maintenance, which was scheduled after hours to minimize negative impact to our users and customers, or individual business systems were temporarily offline due to vendor issues. In 2024, we resolved 6,500 Help Desk requests. And with the feedback received during a recent citywide customer survey, IT received a very high customer satisfaction rating. Further accomplishments in IT include the deployment of business systems and network infrastructure to two new facilities, the Police Department substation east of I-5 in the Coastal Farms facility and the Transit Bus Barn off of Jackson Street. We migrated the city website and email systems to our new albanyoregon.gov domain. This change was primarily driven by cybersecurity requirements and for the city to maintain our grant eligibility to take advantage of funding for cybersecurity-related projects and initiatives funded at the state and federal level. Shortly after the .gov migration, we implemented a new email security system that provides enhanced protection against phishing, spam, and other email-based security threats. The system also provides functions for staff to manage their own email filtering preferences, which has helped us decrease the number of Help Desk tickets to assist users with their email. We automated many functions over the past year, including the Fire Med Program for prepaid coverage of ambulance services and the ambulance billing processes. Both of these efforts make it easier for citizens to access those services while eliminating a lot of paper tracking processes. In 2024, we mitigated one cybersecurity incident involving the Lynn County Sheriff's Office due to the safeguards and security controls in place. And through the actions of our cybersecurity incident response team, we were able to minimize negative impact to public safety and systems, which remained isolated and protected throughout that two-day ordeal. And last summer, we commissioned a third-party security vendor to conduct the full audit of our security posture on the internal network, as well as our Microsoft M365 cloud environment. The audit provided really valuable information that allowed us to strengthen the security of our systems and provided a baseline for continued security evaluations. The last audit was conducted in 2009 and is our intent to do those at least every two years from now on. That was too long to wait for that to happen. Many of the trends in IT have been evolving steadily over time, while a few new ones are emerging. Excuse me. With workloads increasing across all departments, the demand for technology and automation also grows. This includes streamlining business processes and implementing the systems that support them. We've seen an increase in the usage of cloud applications, with vendors moving away from platforms that we used to run internally on our own systems and manage them ourselves. She's very cute. This increases vendor lock-in and control and has resulted in increased costs to the city. For example, the building permit system that we have historically administered ourselves has been forced to a cloud-based software-as-a-service platform, and its costs immediately doubled. Cybersecurity is a cornerstone of our IT operations, and with the ever-evolving threat of cyberattacks, we operate under the assumption that it is not a question of if an attack will occur, but when. This mindset drives our proactive planning and defense strategies to protect the city's systems and public services from recreational management to municipal court. The recent explosion of artificial intelligence presents new technologies that have the potential to transform many of the ways we do business, from data analysis to automation of complex or repetitive tasks. The trend among public agencies, Albany included, is to take a cautious but proactive approach to embracing this new technology in a responsible and effective way and leverage it to improve the delivery of public services. During the COVID lockdowns in 2020, we rapidly deployed systems and infrastructure to support an instantly remote workforce that has become a permanent fixture in our operations. We are currently rolling out new systems that improve the work experience for employees, whether they are in the office, the meeting room, or at a conference, or at home. These trends underscore the reality that the number and complexity of systems is continually growing and never decreasing as the city's business needs evolve. At the same time, the number of people managing and supporting those systems has not kept pace. In IT, we face challenges in keeping up with cybersecurity threats and regulatory requirements while ensuring our systems and public services remain available, efficient, and secure. As our infrastructure and system complexity continue to grow, the expectations and strain on IT staff continue to increase, leading to employee burnout, which we manage today to the best of our ability. You've heard mentioned that it's a competitive talent market, and attracting qualified IT professionals for public service jobs has become very challenging. We can't compete with private sector, state, or federal salaries, especially when cybersecurity skills are involved. And we also can't compete with 100% remote workforce option we see commonly offered IT positions in the public and private sector. Director Bailey in Public Works previously mentioned the loss of a hiring pipeline due to the recent elimination of programs at LBCC. And IT was also affected when LBCC ended their computer science programs last year. We saw our pool of local applicants drop to near zero for the positions we've had open over the last 18 months. Shrinking budgets have left us with a significant amount of technical debt. Technical debt refers to outdated systems that were not modernized, along with deferred investments in security and automation systems. For example, we still deploy network hardware upgrades to individual systems manually because the investment has not been made to automate those processes. Over time, the labor and resources required to sustain manual processes or old systems exceeds the initial cost of investing in them. The opportunity cost is also significant. The time spent on manual tasks could have been redirected toward moving forward on other important initiatives. These include addressing our backlog of automation processes that need to be built or implementing technologies that make city workers more efficient. Technical debt also increases IT workloads and forces us into a cycle of doing more with less resources until eventually it becomes a matter of doing less with less. Technical debt also increases IT workloads and forces us into a cycle of doing more with less resources until eventually it becomes a matter of doing less with less. This leads to inefficiencies and diminished effectiveness of our services. Acknowledging our technical debt highlights the need for investment to modernize our systems and enable us to focus on higher-value work. We are hopeful as we look ahead, and we will continue to find opportunities to improve the services that we provide. We had a large number of retirements over the past year, and almost half of our IT team has been hired within the past two years. That turnover is unprecedented in our small department with a very high retention and seniority rate. So while that creates challenges in turnover, it also creates a really rare opportunity to build a forward-looking IT team. With fresh talent, we have an infusion of new perspectives, skills, and energy, and we're really excited about the new folks we have on the team. This transition has brought not only a change in personnel, but an opportunity to transform how we approach the delivery of IT services, making us more secure, responsive, and efficient. In 2025, with the assistance of grant funding, we are taking significant steps to enhance our network security and device management systems, ensuring a seamless and consistent work experience for our users regardless of where they happen to be. These changes will not only improve our security, but also boost efficiency and productivity, empowering our users to work effectively from anywhere. We will also be expanding the use of automation systems to track fleet maintenance for the police department and automating the workflows for many internal forms processes, as well as permits and licenses for our public customers. These efforts will reduce the time and effort spent on manual data entry and tracking paper and make those processes much more accessible for our citizens. Also, we will be leveraging additional grant funding to increase the security of our internal network by replacing our core firewall security systems, and we'll conduct another cybersecurity audit in 2026, both of which are a few efforts to catch up with some of the technical debt I mentioned earlier. A large component of that effort will be focused on data loss prevention, which is an effort to minimize the risk and liability to the city due to data loss or cybersecurity breach. This work will include the classification of the data we create at the user level, as well as the various systems that store and transmit that data. In closing, I'll mention that while we face challenges with growing complexity, cybersecurity threats, and technical debt, we also have opportunities to innovate and improve. By leveraging new technologies such as AI, streamlining operations through automation, modernizing our systems, and securing grant funding for critical upgrades, we can continually work to ensure that our systems remain secure, efficient, and capable of supporting, supporting the evolving needs of our community. I want to thank you for your time tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Counsel, any questions? Counselor Smith?
Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
I, I depend on the help desk. I remember when the help desk was a person. A person.
Alan.
And, and.
Retention.
Yeah. It's, it's astonishing how, I, I think that the IT department is an example of, it's like a microcosm of how the world has changed in the last 20 years. How I, our IT department has changed, and the complexity and the number of people and the things that you do just reflect what has happened to the rest of the world. Very grateful that you're here, and I can't say enough about the response that I get when I, when I need help.
Well, thank you.
Very good customer service.
Appreciate that. It's, it's never boring.
I imagine it's not. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Counselor Montague?
I just want to commend you on the amount of work that you guys get done with how few employees that you have. As somebody who, you know, works with automation and understands all the things that you do, and every time we approve a new system to procure understanding how much work that is for you guys, I just want to appreciate that. And as somebody who always advocates for more technology, because I see the return on that investment, I will also advocate for us to invest in technology more in the coming years. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I echo Counselor Monte's comments. And as someone, like I write scripts and do technical data layer implementations, I commend you for wanting to tackle all your technical debt. That is always a huge feat and awesome. It's especially when I feel like some systems are kind of built upon others and you have to address layers of debt. So I'm excited for you guys to become more streamlined.
Thank you, and I, I appreciate those comments. It's, we, we have an amazing team. And I'm really, really fortunate to be in this position at this city. And I thank you.
When I, I would like to say that I never worry about calling your department or sending an email or sending a text. Your team's been fantastic, and I've been doing this since 2019, and I can't ever recall a time where I didn't get a response within five to 10 minutes. So I do appreciate that. Let your team know. We love the work they're doing.
I can't wait to do that. I'll let them know. Thank you.
All right. Next director would be HR. Let me say it, Human Resources.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilors. My name's Holly Roten. I'm your Human Resources Director. I have that very distinct honor to serve in that capacity and serve this organization and our employees. I'm gonna hopefully have the technical skills to manage here. Okay. So our mission, we're dedicated to maximizing the potential of our greatest asset, our employees. We're a service organization. Everything that we do requires people, and we're the people, people behind those people. Our vision is to be innovative partners fostering highly effective teams. We currently have seven FTE, although there's a little bit of a caveat to that. We have an administrative assistant position that has been temporarily allocated to our department to help alleviate some of the backlog of work that we've had come our way. And we definitely have a need for that position long-term. It will be part of our request in the upcoming budget, and hopefully we're able to maintain that staffing, staffing level. We have not been at seven FTE since a position was cut in 2010 as part of the last recession. So this would help restore us to the, to that position count. And we have a biennial budget of 2.3 million, which is largely personnel costs because we are here seven people serving all of our employees. Our primary functions, it's a challenging endeavor to try to consolidate this onto one or two slides. We do offer a wide range of services internally to our departments. We are the HR department for the entire city. So we're Public Works HR, we're the Finance Department's HR, we're the Police Department's HR. And we are with employees all the way from recruitment to retirement. We're a full life cycle. We deal in everything from leave administration, benefits administration, recruitment and helping develop positions, design job postings, help facilitate the recruitment process, and then onboarding those employees. We oversee all of our compensation and benefits programs and negotiate those programs with our four bargaining units. And then as well as designing policies and programs for our non-bargaining employees. In addition to that, we're active in workforce development. This is an area that unfortunately we've not been able to place a great deal of focus because of our staffing limitations. We're eager, eager to do more in this area, working with departments to ensure that we have an appropriate leadership development pipeline, that we're meeting their training needs. And generally, departments have very department-specific training, so we're looking more at what applies citywide and how can we help them develop those. Of course, regulatory compliance. You've heard a lot of our department heads talk about the alphabet soup of regulatory agencies. We have those too. A lot of required reporting at the state and federal level. And then, of course, we're doing regular compliance audits to make sure that we're meeting those standards. And then workplace safety, we do get currently some assistance from our emergency manager, Safety Officer Chuck Perino. And we are, but we have a huge role to play in that as well in these program areas like workers' comp and safety training and policies. And then, of course, we manage the city's drug and alcohol program. We have a transit facility that is regulated by the FTA, so that's very important that we're on top of that. It's heavily regulated, and so that's a big component of our drug and alcohol program, as well as many CDL holders across the city that are covered under Department of Transportation regulations. This is our org chart. You can see it's fairly flat. I'm the only supervisor in the department. And we've got currently one senior analyst, three HR analysts, and then a fourth person who's dedicated to our HRAS system. We deal in a lot of data. Everything that we do on our side flows into payroll to ensure that employees are getting paid appropriately. It's my staff that's doing all of those pay changes in the system behind the scenes. So that's a big job in and of itself. And then we do have that administrative assistant assigned to our department, at least through the end of the biennium. Recent accomplishments. Our primary focus over, I'll be honest, over 2024 was to get back to a good place in staffing. We were hit very hard. We had two longer-term employees both leave last summer, and we had another employee out on leave unexpectedly. And we did not yet have that admin position in our department, so it was three of us, including myself, managing the day-to-day operations of HR. So we feel like these might be minor, but for us, on top of managing our major daily caseload, workload, excuse me, we were also able to put a really concerted effort onto getting paperless processes in place, finding ways where we can more heavily leverage technology. We recently deployed a help desk system with the assistance of IT, and that's been helping us manage that workload and be able to assign based on, you know, who might have more availability or who the department rep is. And then just this morning, I was presenting to our executive leadership team about being able to route employment requisitions directly through our recruitment software. So that's another paper process. We've, we've eliminated. As of today, no more paper requisition forms. So these are just small but important examples. Over the life cycle of a recruitment, these small adjustments make a big difference for both the departments we serve as well as for my employees. And they're very excited to make these adjustments and realize efficiencies. Another major accomplishment was to, with those two staff members leaving, that was obviously very stressful, but with that, we were able to hire two wonderful HR generalists who do that full-cycle model of recruitment benefits and leave. They come with a, some awesome experience that we've been able to leverage and put their talents to use here at the city. Other recent accomplishments, Director Bailey from Public Works spoke briefly about their need to restructure their operations positions to be more effective in recruiting and also to create an obvious professional development pipeline for our maintenance workers and meet their operational needs. That was a pretty significant undertaking for our staff to help them navigate that, conduct all the salary surveys, and negotiate that with our AFSMI union. And similarly, right on the heels of that operations project, we did the same thing in engineering. We also recently completed an overhaul of our non-bargaining salary schedule to ensure that the salary grades and projection, progressions were consistent, and counsel adopted that with the last budget. And then we were able to research and identify a new program for employee assistance that's been really well-received. Our employees seem quite pleased with the new company. Not to be outdone, 2023 brought us paid family medical leave, which is statewide. It impacts all employers in the state of Oregon. And it's a great program, but there's no question it came with a significant learning curve. There was a lot of policies that we needed to develop. We needed to bargain that with, the impact of that with our unions. We are still, we have union negotiations ongoing with two of our units. We recently just received favorable resolution on the ULPs that were filed, but there is a, a pretty significant staff impact, just in terms of workload.
ULPs or ULPs?
I'm so sorry for the acronyms, unfair labor practice. There were unfair labor practices filed that we've been working to navigate for the better part of a year. We recently received resolution to those, but it's just another example of the workload that comes. Anytime that there are new major programs handed down from the state level, it, it takes some time to work through the adjustments with them. Trends. I'm not going to share anything that you haven't already heard from other department directors. It is an increasingly challenged hiring environment, specifically within HR, finding HR professionals following COVID. Many of them left the profession. It was just too stressful and never looked back. But this is very much true across the city. We are, I've, interesting statistic, I love data, so I couldn't help myself. I was sitting at the back and I heard Counselor Park mentioned that, I'm sorry, Director Park mentioned that half of his employees are new within the last two years. So I, I couldn't help but look. Forty percent of our staff has been hired since COVID. So that's a pretty, I knew it was high. I didn't know it was that high, to be honest. Ninety-two of our current employees were hired in the last two years. So 51 were hired in 2024 and 41 were hired in 2023. So that gives you some insight into the ever-evolving landscape with respect to our employees. Our, the number of employees who are here less than five years is significantly greater than it would have been even just a few years ago. That also gives you some insight into the workload that HR has been managing. So a great deal of, it's a great deal higher than I would have even guessed, just off the cuff. A wave of upcoming retirements. Important to understand that when I came to you two years ago and I mentioned we have 25% of our staff that could turn over in the next five to six years, 37 retirements did happen in the last two years. So we've weathered a significant part of that storm already. Fifty-three more are eligible. Now, that's not to say they will retire, but it's something we need to have on our radar. Fifty-three more employees are eligible in the next three years. So as we're making decisions about staff development, succession planning, more data-driven workforce development, that's just something we need to have in mind. And then, of course, inflationary pressures. You've heard that from every director up here. And then state mandates, paid family medical leave just being the most obvious one that had the most significant impact on our organization, but also all employers. So looking ahead, I mentioned we had the sort of sudden loss of two staff members last year. Both of those were longer-term city employees. They'd been here close to 10 years, citing volume and burnout as two of the primary reasons that they were leaving. An unrealistic expectation for the workload for those positions. So we're very keyed in on that and working to address that, restructuring some positions. We now do thankfully have that admin support. There's also just been a historical lack of investment in technology specific to our department. It's one thing to procure the software. It's another thing to then be able to carve out the staff time to figure out how best to leverage that software. And that's where we've been lacking. So we are all, 2025 is the year of leveraging technology, process improvement. We're going to make the time. Not a week goes by that we aren't having some sort of process improvement meeting internally to talk about. This has to be, we, there has to be a way we can make this better. Our sort of theme of the year is question everything. Like, it's okay. There may be a good reason we're doing it that way, but there may be a better way. And my team's really bought in on that, and it's kind of exciting to see people realize that, oh, we can do this in the system and automate this, and now I don't have to worry about running that report manually anymore. So very exciting times. One of the limitations we do have is we know that with time, as the city continues to grow and the complexity of our work continues to grow, we will likely need to add capacity within HR. As I mentioned, we support the entire city. So we're, as much as we are an administrative department, you know, function, we're a strategic partner. And it's important that we get, work with departments to get ahead of issues, and we be present and out in those departments and working with them on the forefront of something as opposed to on the tail end trying to, okay, well, wish I would have known about that back here kind of thing. And we have wonderful partnerships across the city. Other department directors and I are constantly meeting to strategize on how to get ahead of something. But I'm just one person, and so needing to add that capacity long-term, I, I know that that's something that we'll need to be talking about. And we currently have nowhere to house them. That's true for all of central services. We're going to be, you know, I, the deputy city manager was here today talking about the need to restructure some things with a budget officer and a, an accounting manager. We don't have a space for both of those people. We have one office and two positions. So it's a challenge that we're working through. And then employee engagement. We recently completed an employee engagement survey. The deputy city manager came on and pretty quickly identified that that was an area we needed more information from our employees and how we were doing. And this is an area that, for us personally, I would like to see us put a significant investment. We have not done a good enough job, but that's largely due to our staffing. We have not done a good enough job, but that's largely due to our staffing. Employees have specifically identified this when they leave and we're conducting exit interviews. But also current employees have said this is an area that needs improvement. So like the IT department and the finance department, we have the opportunity of leveraging the talents of new employees, new ideas, new knowledge, new strengths. So that's a great opportunity for us. And then leveraging that technology. Council approved a risk manager position late last year. And it is currently posted. We are trying to recruit for that. And so that's a very exciting opportunity to be able to address that need. I think the deputy city manager will probably cover this, but last year saw some pretty significant increases in property casualty liability, about 30%. So we have a real need to address that in a very concerted way. And I think that's my last slide. Yes, it is. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Wow, that was a mouthful.
I tried to be efficient with your time, Mayor.
He did a great job. And I've seen the department go from this to that and now where you're at, and I saw the losses as well. I can't tell you how much I appreciate all the work you put into the bargaining, the negotiations, the classifications, all those things you do do. I don't know how you do it. And I applaud you.
Coffee.
There you go. I applaud your whole department for the work you guys do on our behalf. Counsel, do you have anything for Holly? Director Roten?
Well, thank you for your kind words. I will pass that along to my team. Appreciate you all.
Next, the city manager's office. Five minutes.
I don't think I'm going to get five minutes for you, but I will certainly try. I think Holly took about half of my data, so that that will help streamline some of that for you. But I do want to make sure that as we move through this tonight, my goal here, and really the goal that we always have in the city manager's office, is to help facilitate information and support people. So as I'm moving through, talking through the points tonight, we have a lot of privilege being in the city manager's office that we get to see everything. We get to be a part of the development of all of our processes and programs. And that gives us a lot of unique perspective and access to information. It also lets us know that there's a lot of times that we just don't know what we don't know. And it's okay for you as council as well to simply not know something. And I want you to ask if something is confusing or you have a question. What I'm going to present tonight, a lot of it is not going to be new to you. Again, because we support, as you can see in our mission there, a lot of the other functions within the city. You're going to hear a lot of very similar trends. I'm going to try to provide context for you in terms of what that means not only today, but as we look towards the future. I think one thing that a lot of new council members will find interesting or surprising is the reality that a lot of the items that you're seeing come across today were started by council members making decisions two, three, four years ago. So a lot of the work that you are doing now is going to be hitting the public. You're going to see that coming to fruition again in the future. So interesting perspective there. That being said, we have the city manager's office right here. We have 10 FTEs, I'll get into that in just a moment. And I'm going to bring your attention to the biennial budget here. So you see 2.9 million for the city manager's office. That's the core city management function, which again, I will talk about in a moment. But I do also want to point out that we have the 600,000 and 500,000 for code compliance and emergency management respectively. You did hear about those in both police and fire, that is where those positions live. However, because their functions service a number of different departments for budgeting purposes, they do run through here. So just want to present that little piece there. There's always weird things you see that help to streamline some budgeting processes. Okay, so primary functions. I talked a little bit about the core function of city management on the prior slide, but I want to elaborate a little bit more here. So again, we do provide department support. And a lot of what that looks like is incorporating strategy and removing pain points. Because we have that privileged access to information, and as you heard, all of these people behind me tonight, all the people that we had on Monday, they're very, very busy. They often are focusing in on their subject matter expertise, working through that. And oftentimes, without intending to, may do something that has consequences elsewhere within the organization or in the community. It's our job to recognize those pieces, get those groups talking together, and try to mitigate as many of those pain points as we possibly can before those things go live, come to the public, or impact our employees. Some of the work that we have been doing over the last year, our last couple of months, excuse me, includes sitting down with departments, process mapping, that's a process improvement tool, and really looking for areas that we can help streamline and reset. That reorganization that we had earlier, talked about in finance department, that's a really great example of that. City recorder, this is a function you guys are going to be a little bit more familiar with. They are working through your agendas, your minutes. They're also responsible for records management. So that means retaining those documents, making sure that we are keeping them filed the way that we need to, and also pulling those when we have a public records request, which we get a lot of. Was there a question?
You have a question?
Yeah, go for it.
So this is like the first time I've seen city recorder.
Yeah.
Is there organizational change or a name change?
So this is a fun fact. So I have only been on the job for about six months. And something I had to get used to and learn is that what is typically referred to as city, referred to as city clerk across most of the country is primarily referred to as city recorder here in the state of Oregon. So we made a conscious decision when we went out to post. We wanted to make sure that we would play well on the recruitment boards. So we specifically changed that title, it doesn't change the duties. But we specifically changed that title so that when people are scrolling through those, they identify that position and we could get really great candidates like Eric. No pressure. Does that help answer that?
Yeah, it does.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then final piece, final branch, if you will, is communications and engagement. This right now is a one man show. This is the Matt Harrington group over here. And this is the group that is primarily driving a lot of outreach, support for events, and then also conducting external and internal engagement activities. That's a lot, right, for one person? That being said, I want to move into what our current org chart looks like and some of the things that we're talking about for the future. So you can see that, just to show how new the city recorder position title is, it's not updated on here. But we actually have the city recorder. And then we actually just recently reordered the deputy city recorder position at this point to a deputy city recorder slash executive admin. We're working through some automations in the city recorder world that are going to allow us to lift some of that capacity off of that supporting position and move some admin functions into that area. What that will allow us to do is then make some other reorganizations where you see central administrative officer and central services support specialist to increase capacity both for grant writing and for communications and engagement functions. That way, we could be more proactive about engaging, educating, and being transparent with our public. And then finally, risk manager. I'm not going to repeat the statistics. Holly did take everything that I had written down here for the risk manager. But you will note that that is sitting in city manager's office right now, a pain point we identified with all the capacity issues, turnover that was happening in HR. We really needed to get that position moving forward. We've pulled that into the city manager's office in order to get that posted, get that running. That actually posted on Friday. So fingers crossed, tell everybody you know, this is a great career opportunity for them. And then finally, you see that emergency manager and code compliance officer over there as well. Yeah, go for it.
I should have asked this earlier.
Absolutely.
Just for clarification, the $2.9 million budget.
Yeah.
Does it include the $600,000 code compliance and $500,000?
It does.
Those are in addition to. Okay, thank you.
Great question. Okay, so let's talk a little bit about accomplishments. So looking at this first area here, we have enhanced engagement. So this has really been work to engage different members of our community, diverse members of our community, and really create an experience where they, we can build public trust. For some of you, you were able to attend the city Halloween event, which is where that picture is from there, which was a wonderful opportunity for members of the public to come here to city hall, interact with our employees, and really build that relationship, humanize the people who work here. Oftentimes, government can be seen as a monolith. It's a little bit scary. And I think that really helped build some relationships in the community. We've also been internally working on access, which is an ongoing process improvement. We've already noted and are making some adjustments on this ADA presentation template just from what we've worked through over the last two nights. And then also, we're doing facilitations internally to work through process improvements, which leads to that next category there. In regards to citizen advisory groups, we have launched a number of new templates, standard operating procedures. I almost entered the alphabet soup and said SOP, but really working to streamline those processes that we're doing every single year or throughout the year. We are also spearheading the strategic budgeting approach, which if you remember back to a couple of months ago, that is that linkage between your strategic plan, where you set your goals, your vision, and then ultimately how we develop the budget in order to make sure we are supporting that vision and moving that forward. And then also, under accomplishments, we've been working on planning for the future. I talked about reorganization in the city manager's office. There's also been reorganization in the finance department, HR, and we are working with other departments to figure out the best way to utilize resources. People are very expensive. They're 80% of our ongoing budget, which means if there's opportunities where we can leverage people in better ways, we're going to look at that first. Really trying to defer when we need to add so that when we come to you for that ask, we know that it is something that is necessary and really something that should be considered. We also recently completed an employee experience survey, which Holly did touch on. This gave us really great data to work with as we are planning for additional turnover and working on developing the new employees that we have. Gave us some really great insight into areas that we can improve that experience and hopefully help them perform better and maximize their success. And then finally, at the bottom there, I encourage you to visit that website if you have not already. As part of our recruitment efforts, Matt Harrington put a significant amount of work into developing a careers website, which highlights pieces of our culture, who we are as an organization, and what it means to be a member of the city of Albany and this community. That's incredibly important. If you look at the data, the number one driver for people choosing to work in an organization and to stay in an organization is now organizational culture. Okay, and then finally, regional partners, try to speed this up a little bit. We are always engaging with many of our community partners, working with our neighboring counties legislators. You're going to see a real ramp up as the legislative section starts, as we will be tracking bills and providing that information for you. Okay, trends. None of this is going to be new. 25.7% inflation since 2019. So we work with what's called core inflation, which is basically excluding things like food, which we don't purchase a whole lot of, and then really looking at those core services and movement. So since 2019, we've seen that 25.7% inflation. That's what is driving a lot of the cost increases that you've heard about from our other departments as they've come before you. At the same time, we're grappling with aging infrastructure and equipment out there. Those are items that we are going to have to replace. And the longer that we wait to replace those, the more expensive it becomes. It also becomes more of a reality that something may go down and we are in an emergency situation needing to get that repaired or replaced. There's also an increasing demand for services. You heard some members of the public earlier expressing some frustration with growth. And that's, that's a valid concern and a valid frustration. There is a lot of additional work that comes with growth. And that is something that we have to figure out how to support. Also in demand for services, people want their services to be quality and they want them now. We are in a day and age when people expect to be able to click a button, get access to the information that they, they need. And that creates a lift for, for city staff. A lot of the processes that you've, you've heard over the last two nights are extremely manual still. And as we work forward through technology and trying to implement that, that does take time, that does take resources, and that does take investment in order to get that technology in place. It can pay great returns, but it's not something that happens overnight. Declines in public trust, I think we all know, and I'm sure you as council members will feel this when there's a lot of questions and, and really needing to explain and take that extra time and care to help people understand what we're doing, how we're doing it, and why. And then difficulty recruiting in local government. I'm not going to hit more on this one. It's a nationwide problem, particularly difficult here in Oregon because we do have more restrictive state legislation in terms of how we can recruit for people. And then finally, I hit on that technology expectation as well. Challenges and opportunities, balancing revenues and expenditures. So while we have a balanced budget in the biennium, we do not as a city have what is called a structurally balanced budget. That means that our revenues, excuse me, our expenditures over time are growing faster than our revenues, which is why every couple of years, you run into this problem of having to have a conversation around either cutting services, addressing the revenue picture, or some combination of both. And while there's a lot of work on the backend that is happening through process improvement to try and address that, try to defer the need to add or address the revenue side of things, there is a point at which we have, are simply not able to make enough gains to cover that ground. Technology investment, you heard about, particularly from our, from our IT department, about how we are pretty far behind in some of our technology pieces. And that is something that you're going to hear about over the next year as we look to take this opportunity to really move that forward and gain some further process improvements through leveraging technology and software. And then finally, employee turnover. Holly stole my statistics for the, the turnover and the wave of retirements. But I want to talk a little bit about what that looks like from an organizational impact. When you have an organization that is seeing higher levels of turnover, so usually about 10% is what you want to see. When you're seeing those higher levels, you are in something that, you're in something called training mode constantly. People have all of their day to day activities that they're trying to execute, but they are also trying to train that new person. They are also trying to make up for people in vacant positions. And then the people who are coming in are less experienced than the people who are leaving. A lot of people we have leaving are 20 plus year employees. So they are not quite as efficient, they're not as competent. There's a lot that has to go into bringing them up to speed. On average, it takes about three years to get someone to the position of being competent where our investment in them is gaining, gaining and generating a return for the city. So that being said, let's look at some opportunities here. You've heard the new employees, new experiences. This is a really great opportunity because employees who haven't been here before don't have the, this is the way it's always been done thinking. So they are really great to tap and have them look at something and go, hey, is there a better way we can do this? What ideas do you have? And they have been excellent. Many of our directors have been working through that over the last several months, really trying to leverage that ability. Continued reorganization, not going to dig into that one anymore. Technology for automation. You did hear in a couple of places where technology is being utilized. I do want to draw attention, the monday.com item that finance mentioned. So that's a pilot program. We have been piloting that in the finance and city manager's office. The investment for those two teams is about $2,000. We've already yielded $70,000 in savings through that pilot program. So that's something that we're going to be looking to scale for more of our, more of our departments. You're also going to see some changes in agenda management process as we work to automate that piece. And then finally, you have a strategic plan update coming up. Our strategic plan ends in, the current strategic plan ends in 2026. So as we reach the end of this year, you will have the opportunity to start working towards what that next vision looks like and where we want to go over the next five years. So that's a really exciting opportunity for US council members to set that direction. It's also very exciting for us on the staff side as we get to see what we'll be working on in that next period. And with that, I will close out unless there's any final questions, comments, or concerns.
Counsel, any questions, comments, or concerns? How's Rema, do you?
I just want to point out that new employees are also a great way to prove your process documentation.
Yes, we keep giving the standard operating procedures to new people and going, make, tell us what's wrong with this and if we need to fix it.
Exactly.
Well, I just want to say that I'm really impressed with the work that's been going on since you arrived. And I really pushed for your position to be filled. And I'm really happy that you are the person that we've selected to do that. And working with Peter and you over the last, since you've been here, I've seen market improvement and my confidence and the agenda process, the recommendations you made on changing how we set the agenda up. I just want to keep it going and have fun with it. I think that you're doing some great work. And the entire staff of the city's, city manager's office and central services are to be applauded for the work that they've done through the pandemic and also now post pandemic. So I thank you very much. Thanks, Mayor. City manager, would you like to close out?
Yeah, I just, you've heard, you've heard many recurring themes.
Yeah, I just, you've heard, you've heard many recurring themes over the last, the last couple nights in the presentations, and many challenges. And you know, process improvements being one of them, and the search for grants and how those have helped us to really to do more with less. But that can also lead, as you've seen and you've heard many times, to burnout and negative impacts on recruitment, retention, and therefore even on service delivery. You've heard about the wave of retirements. That's a common theme. Those were pretty impressive statistics that Holly gave out in terms of number of new employees. And that wave of retirements is exacerbating our recruitment needs and resulting in a, overall, a less experienced workforce. And the implications that that, that lack of experience has on the need for training and development is something that challenges us. You heard about the growth of the city and how it's driving service demand in all, really in all areas, across all departments, and how that, that growth is expected to steadily increase over the next couple of years, the foreseeable future. You've heard about technology enhancements and the importance of technology enhancements to our ability to provide our residents with key services. And finally, you may infer, I think accurately, that we need to be nimble and ready to adapt to state and federal requirements that are handed down to us that we have to, we have to comply with. And certainly, so certainly the next several years will be very challenging, but our public, the people we serve, also face many challenges, and everybody on the staff is aware, cognizant of that. But I want to close on a, on a positive note. I have a, as you've heard, as you know, I have a first-class team of directors, and you've seen that. Be assured that we continue to do the best we can with what we have to provide those quality public services. As I've shared with each of you before, my watchwords are service, stewardship, and integrity. We're lucky to have that exceptionally dedicated and talented staff. They're hardworking and creative. They frequently come up with ideas about how to improve operations and processes. We continue to do the best we can to serve the city in stewardship of the city's resources and in performing both of those with integrity. So in closing, I want to thank the directors for presenting their briefs and thank you for your attention over the last couple of nights.
Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is business from the council. I will, where do I start last week? This way or this way? I'll start with Councilor Monague and go this way and then back over there.
I did, I just wanted to say thank you, first of all. Thank you for everybody who presented and hung out during this whole presentation. But I just want to comment on the excellent applications that we've been receiving to this citizen advisory groups. I've just been really impressed with the folks that have stepped up and volunteered their time to help us out. So, big thank you to all of those who did apply, those who will serve, and those who have served in the past. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilor Smith?
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank everyone for paying attention to the presentations that we've heard this week, considering what we have been told, finding the trends that we face in dealing with our budget and our strategic planning as we go forward into this next budget cycle. It has, it's, I'm glad that staff have been treated with respect, that we treat each other with respect, that we listen to each other, and that we listen to the people who come to speak to us and consider what they tell us when we make our decisions. We are not here to serve ourselves. We are here to serve the people who gave us this opportunity, to serve them. And I just wanted to reinforce that while I had the opportunity to do so.
Councilor McGee?
Nothing tonight.
Councilor McLeod?
I have two items, sir. The first is a constituent contact that I had via telephone with concerns about, excuse me, with concerns about transients in his neighborhood who were screaming at all hours of the night, and he would call police dispatch and feel that his, his concerns were ignored. This was near the Periwinkle Bike Path off of 15th Avenue near Queen and Gary. He expressed concerns about coming to the council to speak, concerns with retaliation of some sort, and I contacted the, the police chief and the Parks and Recs director about lighting that he had suggested along the bike path and gave him several, I gave him several recommendations, including keeping a written contact log of crimes and contacts with law enforcement, as well as reporting parks maintenance issues on the city website, as well as some other things. And I did hear back from someone in the police department who spoke with him, and I will be continuing contact with this constituent. The second item is a, just a personal statement of gratitude. Today marks the beginning of a journey, and I am honored to take this journey with the residents of our city. I'm grateful for the trust that you have placed in me to serve as your city councillor. As a child, I was the youngest daughter of a divorced mom of three. She worked in city government and was required to speak at city councils' meetings as part of her job. Often, she would drag me along with her. Little did I know the influence that those moments would have on me and how they would affect me today. So, thank you, Mom. I also want to say thank you to the other individuals who worked to help me gain this seat. Whether you knocked doors, made phone calls, donated money, wrote postcards, worked on strategies, logistics, or simply marked the bubble next to my name, thank you. Without you, this could not have been possible. To those who doubted me, told me I couldn't win, that I wasn't the candidate for them, who didn't believe in me or outright spewed hatred my way, thank you. Your motivation propelled me to walk farther, knock harder, and call back. Because of you, I did not take this election for granted. My commitment, for as long as I have the privilege to hold this seat, is to listen, advocate, and work tirelessly to address the challenges that we face and build on the strengths of our community. Together, we'll make progress toward a more vibrant and sustainable future for all the people of Albany. So thank you for this opportunity. That's all.
Well said. Councilor Newton Azor?
Thanks. I have two things. First, I've received several complaints from constituents regarding the use of the Sternberg House, which I believe is at 506 Ferry Street Southwest in the Historic District as an outpatient treatment center. I've gone ahead and forwarded their comments to the hearings board. However, I did review the agenda, and I want to just get a confirmation. The agenda lists the property address as 506 Ferry Street Southeast. Could I get a clarification from staff on whether this property is located in southeast or southwest? I say this because the person who lives, you know, at 839 Southeast in my, shares the same address as me, has gotten, you know, there, I know there's married addresses, so I just want a confirmation if this is southwest or southeast. And then if the incorrect address was publicized, does this necessitate rescheduling the hearing to ensure proper notification and accuracy? Is there anyone from staff that might know about that?
So, I can absolutely look into that for you. I don't have it in front of me tonight, but I'll check in with staff in the morning on that. If we did publish it with the wrong address, we will have to look at the noticing to see if we, you know, double-check with Sean, but if it went out with the wrong address, we'll almost certainly have to re-notice it, so.
Okay. Yeah, I caught it just when I was reading, I was like, oh wait, oh no! And then I had to double-check and look up the address.
I'll confirm and let you know.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you. I appreciate that. And then, second, just wanted to take a moment to express my heartfelt gratitude to my fellow councillors for your trust and confidence in electing me to council president. It's an honor to have this opportunity to serve in this capacity. I'm committed to fostering collaboration, respectful dialogue, and effective decision-making as we work together for the betterment of Albany. Thanks again, and I'm looking forward to seeing what we're going to accomplish together as a team.
Thank you. Councilor Thompson?
Yeah, thank you. Sometimes, many times, I may not say much, but tonight, I just feel I got, I got a lot to say. And it starts with thanks. You know, it's, it's a long, time-wise, it's not, not too long, but, but there's a lot that goes into getting here, and I have to thank my parents back in Vancouver, Washington, super helpful. Of course, first and foremost, my wife, Jolene. You need somebody when you do this to keep you on task, and she absolutely does that for me, bounces ideas off her all the time. So she sacrificed too to get, get here, and so did my daughter Erin. You know, we're going to have to make up some concerts this year to make up what we missed. And also, Councilor Newton Azor, strategist, knows campaigns, but just, just an encouraging person. You all know her, just kind of a cheerleader when you're down, and just a huge help. And lastly, I leaned heavily on former mayor Sharon Canopa. One of Jolene and I's best friends are the Canopas in Albany, and just a wealth of knowledge, a network, and just a big help, and I can't give her enough thanks. Also, Cameron Setelmeyer was here earlier. Thanks to him and Nathan Reed, who formerly worked for the city, two other individuals who helped, you know, I just, I can't say enough, it's a process of asking people to help, and it's, it's not that, you know, some people flat-out say no, but some people kind of help, and then some people just say, yes, I'll do that, what else do you need? I'll do more, and those people you remember. Also, I, I agree with Councilor Monague, the, the quality of applicants for Citizen Advisory Committee was impressive, and I just say, I got kind of behind, I didn't get any for this meeting, but I've got a bunch ready to go, and I think I'll get them all done for the 22nd meeting, meeting on the 22nd. And lastly, you know, it wasn't that long ago, I was just a citizen, and I, and I got to say, I don't know what the minute number is for public comment, but as a citizen, I, I learned so much. You know, the things that affect you, you learn when other people come before here, and it's on, it's on YouTube, you know, you can watch it live in the evening, or other local governments that meet in the middle of the day, and you're never going to get, I mean, who goes and makes comments then? So I, I don't know what the number is, but I, I just want to say the city does a great job, and I'll lastly say, I spent two years on the school board, and I look at, I see parents in this room. You cannot, you cannot go to the Greater Albany School Board and have public comment, period, ever. And I told my fellow school board members at the time, this is dumb. There are people there in the room, there are people who will come, we're governed by the same ROS that governs city public comment, and they can certainly allow it, and they choose not to. So my, my comment would be, I don't know what the minutes are, but go to the school board and see if you can talk at all. See if you can talk for a minute, because you can. And I got a lot of minutes to say to them. So that's, that's how I end my, my comments tonight.
Thank you, councillor. I've got a few things. I want to say first and foremost, thank you to Matthew Harrington, Matt Harrington. The If For America contest has kicked off, and I think we have to have everything in by February 23rd, and teachers are already starting to reach out to me about coming to the classroom and talking to them. And so I'm excited about that contest. Our children have scored first, second, and third in state all four years I've been the mayor, so I want to keep that trend going. At the last Oregon Mayors Association meeting, our high school winner from last year, Halle Husefka, gave a great speech, got a standing ovation, and it was a joy to see her, she came back from college, and we had a great time talking about her going to college and then going to Moscow City Council meetings and watching how they do things, and she's like, oh, you're way better. So it was really nice to see her this, this, this break. We've been invited, I'll forward the message to the city recorder, to a career fair, one of the local schools, and not just me, but the council's been invited and staff, so I'll send that to you, and you can get out the folks, okay? And then, I want to say a heartfelt thank you to Allison. I believe this is one of your last, if not your last, meeting with us, and so I've been, I've known her only a few short years, but I would appreciate if you'd join me in applause She, she has been, for me, a great resource, a great educator, educating me on process, educating me on the history, and I can't tell you how much I do appreciate all you've done for the city, even though I've only known you six years. We're, we're not going to miss you. I hope you come and visit from time to time. The, oh, the Miss Oregon pageant is coming to Albany on the 18th of January. I've been asked to be a judge, and if you, if you've been asked to be a judge, I'd love to see you, but it's going to run award scholarship monies to, I think, 16 to 28 women in our community are from Marion County, Adlin County, so I'm excited about being a part of that process, sponsored by two of the women from Albany that won at the state level for Miss, Miss Oregon. And then I want to say, I read a lot of books when I was in the Navy. I read a lot of books when I was in the Navy, and one of the books I read was about President Jimmy Carter. They don't talk about his military history, at least a lot of organizations do, but Jimmy Carter was the commanding officer of a nuclear submarine with 96 ICBMs. Let that sink in for a moment. While he was in command of a nuclear submarine, he was one of the most powerful men on the planet militarily. And he's been characterized by some media outlets as, as a peanut farmer, as a failure, but I admired him and the work that he did on behalf of our country, our military, and so I've already started to set the recording for his funeral memorial, and, and his love affair with his wife, Rose Rosalyn, for all those years. He's a statesman, and to me, he'll be a hero forever. And then I will shut down with my wife. Our 40th anniversary is this year. I can't even tell you how many times she supported me with the military moves, the city moves, the job changes, you know, the health issues, the tumor, all the things that we've been through as a family. And when she told me that she was okay with me running for office again, it was great, a great moment in my household, so. And then I, we found out at the same time when she, we found out we're having a grandson in July, and so we're pretty excited in our house, so thank you, and I will now turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And I, I want to add my congratulations too to Councilor Thompson for taking office, and Councilor McLeod, and Councilor Smith for being re-elected, and Mayor Johnson for being re-elected as well, and Councilor Newton Azor for being elected as council president. I wanted to point out that the council has a kind of a special meeting this month on the 27th, Monday, the 27th, which is a council retreat. It's from 4 o'clock to 7 o'clock in the evening, not the usual 4 to 6, and it's at the Police Department's Community Room, and that's going to be a council retreat. And with that, that's all I have. Mayor, thank you.
I have a question. Is that open to the public or just us?
Yes, it's open to the public.
Okay.
All right. With that, we're done. Thank you, sir. Next meeting dates, Wednesday, January 22nd, 2025, at 6:00 p.m., for a city council meeting, and Monday, January 27th, that's for our retreat, and we'll be at the Police Department